Sit down and we will get started. This is incredible. I wish we could get this kind of crowd at city council. That's for the mayor of Gator. But this is wonderful. Hi, everybody. My name is Kathy Silasri Loper. I, along with my husband, own The Gaver Newspaper, and we are the co-hosts with the Gulfport Merchants Chamber of Commerce tonight of the 2024 Gulfport Candidate Forum. In years past, we've had two separate forums, but President Sarah Larfuentes said, you know what? Makes sense to do it together, and, well, that was half the work, and we thought it would be a great opportunity. So, I'm gonna let John Hugan with the chamber. He was sitting there a minute ago. There he is. John's gonna explain the rules, but first of all, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight, regardless of who you support. I also very much want to thank the chamber for asking us to partner because in a small community like Gulfport, one of the things that is so important is that no matter what we believe individually, we can all work together, and the chamber's partnership with us is a great example of that.
Yeah.
I want to say for the record, for those of you who do not know this, both the chamber and The Gaver Newspaper are officially nonpartisan. We do not endorse or recommend any candidates. We are here, just as you are, and hear what they have to say, and we approach tonight's events without agenda or predisposition. That said, elections can be ugly, the smaller the town it is, and so with that in mind, I want to thank both of our candidates for being brave enough and caring enough to put their names forward. So please, regardless of who you support, this is the one time we are gonna ask you to please applaud and thank both candidates for caring enough about Gulfport to be a part of the 2024. We are live streaming on YouTube. We are, right? We're on YouTube. You'll find us at Gaver Newspaper 1968, so you can watch this debate over and over again. Have some friends over, tailgate. It'll be great. Really, it's fantastic.
And I'll be doing it at my home as well.
Yes, and we'll be having a tailgate party as well, I'm sure. That is the last heckling we're gonna ask for. We are gonna please, 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 please ask you to hold your applause, your groans, your shouts. Do not throw pies. Do not throw tomatoes. We really want to just keep this for the candidates tonight. We want to hear everything they have to say, and at some point, the city's gonna kick us out of the theater, so we need to give them all the time we can. John Hugan with the chamber is gonna explain the rules right now, but thank you so much. Have a great night, and we'll see you all at city council next week.
As Kathy said, my name is John Hugan. I run for Gulfport Merchants Chamber. If you haven't been to our new offices at 5127 Gulfport Boulevard, please stop in. We have much bigger offices. On behalf of Kathy Frenzen and myself, who will be moderating, taking turns, I want to welcome all of you here, as well as April and Tom. So, tonight's forum will be, as I said, we, first of all, let me tell you, if there's anybody new in town, although both time in April are running for city council in the first ward, and any eligible Gulfport voter can vote for either candidate. You don't have to live in their ward to vote. So, how we're gonna operate tonight, we have flipped a coin, and Tom will be doing the opening statement for two minutes, then April. April gets the first question, and then at the end, Tom will have the first close, and April will the last close if you will. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer a question. We have a timekeeper. Dan Glenn is in the front row. He'll be the timekeeper, let us know what's going on. That's it. Oh, I know. We're gonna start out with questions that we have compiled, both The Gaver and the Gaver-GMC. Have a couple of questions that we compiled from the community large, and as y'all have known, we have been taking questions from the audience, those at the end. We hope to start, well, we hope to finish at 7:30. That's all. With that, Tom?
Still working? Well, everybody here in the back?
Yes.
Great. Am I on it? Yeah, time's running out. All right. First of all, I'd like to thank The Gaver and the GMC for hosting this event, and all of you for coming out, and the people who are at home watching it live as we're streaming it. As a young man, I became an Eagle Scout. Scouting reinforced my values of giving back, honesty, integrity, leadership, and working as a team. And also, possibly important, and being a skill acquisition. So that I was not just someone who wanted to do a good job, but someone with the skills needed to get the job done. After scouting, I became part of the Navy Seavies. That's the Construction Division of the Navy. I was there for 22 years, acquiring more skills. The motto of the Seavies is "Can Do," which is something I truly believe in. Getting the job done right, no matter what the obstacles are, or how hard it seems at the onset. It is at the core of my focus on everything I do. Focus that I brought to the students when I became a high school construction teacher for 18 years after I left the Navy, acquiring yet more skills. Focus I brought to the school board that was on for 10 years, where I brought a high school from no rating to a national blue ribbon high school, one of only three in the state of Ohio, of course, I get more skills. Focus, that is, the Can Do spirit is what I currently focus on in the Lions Club, the zoning board, and the SERC team here in Gulfport. On March 19th, I hope I can get your vote for me, so I can bring the Can Do spirit to Gulfport City Council. My name's Tom Bittsler. I look forward to working for you and with you. And also, I was privileged enough to get the Suncoast Police Benevolent Association endorsement this week, and I just received yesterday the FOP Penelas Lodge 43 endorsement. Thank you.
Hi, I'm April, Spanish. I'll tell you what really got me committed to being a city councilperson was the horrible sewage spill that we had in 2016. I'd been here four years, and I couldn't believe that that could happen. I felt like I moved to a third world country, and I know Florida isn't that. Gulfport clearly needed to clean up its infrastructure. The city's made a great stride since then, and I want to make sure that nothing like that happens again, especially as weather gets more unpredictable. Climate change is happening, and the sea level is rising. And we're off the coast, and we're very vulnerable. We need to be prepared. That's why environmental issues are so important to me. It's why I make sure we budget enough to keep updating our infrastructure and get grants to do more. Like many of you, I live in the flood zone. So far, my house hasn't flooded, but it came within a couple of inches. But the houses along shore and beach and some of the other streets, you know, just up from the beach, people have been flooded repeatedly, and we need to do something to help them. And Gulfport didn't cause climate change, and we can't solve it. But we can't do it alone, anyway. We need to work together as a county and a state and rely on the resources of all of us. It's my job to find best practices and bring them to Gulfport. Listening to residents and business owners is the most important part of my job. I have ideas, but what really matters is what you think. Your ideas for what Gulfport needs. Your experience for living in other places. Your career or job experiences, and your help to make these things happen. We have so many talented and caring people in Gulfport. We can accomplish a lot if we get our heads together. And you can always find me at the Thursday Market, and call, email, or stop me on the street to talk. I always respond to my calls and emails. I have a monthly report that I put on the city email, and it's also on the website. And I enjoy being your city councillor, and I hope that you'll reelect me for another term. Thank you.
I would, Kathy asked if we not applaud, so I would ask that we not applaud until the end, the last closing statement, and we'll keep more time for questions out there.
So, we're gonna begin with the first question. These are questions, at least the first couple of questions, are questions that The Gaver, along with the GMC, came up with together. So, the first question we're going to ask is, what are your thoughts on Florida Senate Bill 774, which requires city council members and commissioners to fill out Form 6, disclosing their in-depth financial information? And how do you see its place in small cities around Florida?
So, I have no problem filling this out. I don't have any secrets, and I think in terms of making people more transparent and so that you know what's going on with them, it's fine. It's probably a little bit over the top for small municipalities because a lot of people have quit because they don't want to do it. I don't think that they're gonna change it, and already, the state officers all do it, and the county officers do it. So there's very little incentive for them to change it back to the more simple form. And personally, I have no problem with it.
Thank you. Tommy, whenever you're ready.
I knew about this when I signed up to be elected. I had to sign a form, actually, saying I didn't know it was coming. So I'm okay with it, and I think it's all about transparency and honesty. So I have nothing to hide, and I think transparency is paramount in this position. And like April said, maybe some people think it's an invasion of their privacy and that, and they have things that they need to hide. I have nothing to hide whatsoever. Thank you.
The next question, we'll go to Tom first. How would you define the spirit of Gulfport?
The spirit of Gulfport? Well, I came from a small town and had visited a friend of mine who was working here. He was a welding teacher, but he retired earlier than I did. Fortune's for him. But I came here, and I just fell in love with the place. The marketplace on Tuesday, the art walks, the diversity within the city. Things are, within walking distance, you can do everything. You've got restaurants. You've got businesses. And I've also said that when there's somebody in need, we stand up as a community and we help. They did that at home. They do it here. This is like home to me, so that's why I'm doing it. I plan on making this my home for the rest of my life.
So I agree with a lot of what Tom said. I like, I've normally lived in pretty much big cities, and what I like is the whole neighborhood feel. So I always had neighborhoods where I could walk to the shops, walk to restaurants. My daughter could walk to school, and that's what I got here in Gulfport. And it also is on the water, and I've always lived on the water, and that's important to me. And I also like having music and arts and the variety of shops that we have, and the people. You know, you come to Florida because people are from so many different places, it's easy to make friends. And, you know, compared to where I came from, sometimes people are a little more standoffish than that. So I like that it's easy to get involved, and that people do get involved, and that there's so many different kinds of things to do, and different ways to make a difference, and people help each other and are interested in what's going on. And again, I hope people get more interested and come to city council. But other than that, I think it's a great place to live, and I love that we're getting more younger people, so that we have more children around. I love that part of it. And I also like that, you know, we're close to other things, so that we bring people into Gulfport, but also we can go out to other, you know, neighboring communities and find whatever minor things that Gulfport's missing. So I find it a great place to live, and I've been here 11 years now, and I'm here permanently. Thanks.
Thank you. Kind of in conjunction with that question, how do you feel about maintaining this spirit in a constantly changing world, and why is it important to accept change even if it could change some of the facets of your definition of what a community spirit is?
Change is inevitable, and, you know, we've got climate change coming. We've seen it, especially since COVID. That was a big change for all of us, not having lived through a major pandemic before. And housing, the housing prices have gone up, so the kind of people who are coming here are different. And again, we're getting young families, which is great, and things are always gonna change. And I think if you keep the underlying spirit, that the people who come here are coming because of what they see and what they feel when they get here, that they'll pull themselves into the same spirit that everybody else has. And, you know, that'll help keep it going, but again, there's gonna be change. And so I think what you have to do is talk about it a lot and plan, so that you don't just all of a sudden, 10 years from now, say, what the heck happened? You know, that you know what you're doing, and you know that when you're planning for the kinds of changes you can expect, and that people that live here are on board with that and are part of the process.
Thank you. Tom, are you ready?
Could you repeat the question?
Yeah. In conjunction with, how would you define the spirit of Gulfport? How do you feel about maintaining the spirit in a constantly changing world, and why is it important to accept change even if it could change some of the facets of your definition of the spirit?
Thank you. Well, I feel that if you're listening to the people in your community, I'm speaking as potential councillors, or, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna work with those people to maintain the ongoing spirit that you've always had for years. And I tell you, I look around, and I feel the same way about meeting people and the friendliness of the people. I'm not sure if that'd be in my lifetime, if this community changed. This community has so many things going for it, and it continues to grow. For instance, the things to do. You look in The Gaver, you look on the city's website about the things there are to do. There's so many events and that. You're always constantly busy and doing things, and I can't keep up with it all. I don't think anybody can. So there's something for everybody, and I think if we continue doing the things that we're doing now, I don't think the change is gonna be for the bad. I think the change is gonna be for the good. I think we could do better at keeping our water quality. I think we can do better at maintaining some of the alleyways in Gulfport. I think there's things that we can do that'll make life better, and I think everybody would be happy with those changes. So I just see good changes, not negative or bad changes. Thank you.
Okay, the next question is a two-part question. What is the biggest challenge that you believe the average Gulfport resident faces in their daily lives? And how do you feel you can help fix the issue? Tom, that's for you.
The biggest challenge? Well, I just said one. You can't go to all defense. No, just kidding. I think one of the biggest challenges in our community, we have a lot of older people. I'm one of them. I put myself in that category. Day-to-day life, you know? I think the senior center is one of the assets we have there that helps with that when it comes to some of the exercise equipment you can use, some of the programs they have, meals that are provided. Financially, keeping up with the things. You all know it. You go to the gas pump. What's the price gonna be this week? You know, I try to catch it all. The week it goes down, get my truck filled up. What's at the grocery store? Food. And next thing you know, you know, people aren't buying steaks anymore. You know, it's not at the price they're charging. A lot of people are going, I was just at Funky Flamenco. You won't believe the number of people that come in and are looking for food. Well, that helps offset some of the costs of where the rents have gone and where the housing costs have gone. And I think that's one of the biggest challenges, is financially and health-wise. Thank you.
I agree affordability and living in Gulfport has gotten way more expensive. You know, I know my house, since I moved here, has probably quadrupled in value, and rents have gone up. We've lost some of the people that make Gulfport wonderful, that, you know, artists and musicians that have had to move out of the area, and other people as well. And so I think that we really need to look at affordable living here in Gulfport. And that's rent and mortgage prices. People that have been buying houses recently, taxes are very high, insurance is shocking. And if you live in the flood zone, you have to have flood insurance. And soon, everybody will have to have flood insurance, plus car insurance. My car insurance went up $200 in a six-month period. And the Florida legislature keeps giving them, you know, approval to increase those rates. Because they have to go there to make sure that they can justify it somehow. And the same thing with the energy prices. You know, Duke keeps going to the legislature for increases, and they get them. And so, number one, put solar on your house. But next, you know, the best thing we can do is try to lobby in Tallahassee. The city can't do too much about a lot of those things. And we can maybe get to more workforce housing, that's maybe another question. But, you know, landlords are gonna charge what they're gonna charge. And, you know, it's the legislature that we really need to be on top of, and there's ways that we can all lobby and see later if you wanna learn more.
Thank you, April. The next question is gonna sound very similar with one major change. What is the biggest challenge that you believe the average Gulfport business faces in their daily lives? And how do you feel you can help fix that issue?
Well, I know when you're starting a business, it often takes quite a long time to get all your permits. And I think that we need to streamline the permit process. We need to, we are updating our website, and they're getting new software in the permitting department. So hopefully, by May 6, that's supposed to come. And, but we also need to tell not only businesses, but residents, everything that they need to do for a permit the first time they come in, so that they can do everything the first time, get it through, get it inspected in a timely manner, so they're not wasting money waiting for things. Because I know, we all know about the Empanada Store on the corner of 49th and Gulfport Boulevard. Took forever, and the oven and the pizza place. So that's important. I think that we do good about attracting people to Gulfport, and they get, you know, a lot of visitors, as we know from the parking situation. And so I think that we're doing well with that, and I think local people support local businesses, and that also helps. But again, getting the planning and the permitting and making that easier and more transparent would be a big step to help the businesses.
Thank you. Tommy?
I think she just hit the nail on the head with permitting. And there's been software supposedly that was purchased two years ago that's never put in place. So I don't know what the problem is over there. I ran into a lot of people that bring that up. It's not just businesses. It's residential. It's in the condos. You can't even print an application for a permit online to fill it out at home. I know a guy that was down in Boca Seaga, or Boca Raton, I'm sorry. And he said, I couldn't even fill that permit out and have somebody submit it for me so it could be in the process. So that's obviously a big problem that's been going on for a while that should be resolved, and I'm gonna be... I've been in construction all my life. I could go to Claremont County, put a plan on the front desk, and come back the next day and have it permitted. They would point out to you what you need to change. That's residential, though. As far as businesses in Gulfport, I think the parking is not a problem. I think it's maybe an issue as far as convenience. I see a lot of people flocking to Gulfport on Friday, Saturday night, Tuesday market. I think they have a lot of people coming, and so again, the businesses, I believe, were asked about the parking, and should we charge for parking? Absolutely not. They want the visitors to come, and it's just more of a convenience issue than a problem. Thank you.
Before the next question, I really want to thank and commend the candidates for staying within the times. They may have something to do. Patrick has the super sofa under the table. All right, the next question, or Tom's first question, or the next question. If the city had a budget of $100,000 shortfall, what would you want to cut? Second part, if they had a $100,000 surplus, what would you do or add?
I'm not sure. Say it one more time.
If the city had a $100,000 budget shortfall, what would you want to cut? And then if they had a $100,000 surplus, what would you want to add or do?
I never really thought about cutting services. I imagine that would be a tough one for the city manager to look at and make recommendations on. I'm sure you could probably take some of the personnel. Personnel is one of the biggest things that we have as far as money going out. So you could trim some of your people down, say, to garbage service. I'm sure, we don't want them not, we don't want them not picking up the garbage. We still want them to pick it up, but maybe you could work them a little harder? I don't know. Can't imagine what could be cut. I think some of the... Now, if we had a surplus, what would I do? Was that part of the question? If I had a surplus, I don't know. Maybe put it towards some of the water and sewer bills and reduce the amount of people we're paying. I hear that complaint from a lot of people, too. So I live in a condo. I'm not aware of what the water and sewer bill is, but I sure got it from the people I've been talking to in this campaign effort. So maybe we could get that reduced by a percent or two. Thank you.
So, if we had a $100 deficit, the things that would be easiest to do would be to delay purchasing cars or vehicles, because very often, you could put off for another year getting a vehicle, and you could, sometimes, depending on what vehicle it is, you could do that with just two vehicles. And then there could be things like you could delay maybe doing some alleys or repaving a street, and that would take care of $100,000 quickly. And for surplus, you know I'm all about trees. I think we could definitely easily spend $100,000 on more trees and make it more beautiful and prevent it from getting, our canopy from decreasing from the natural attrition that we're gonna have from some of our trees. So I would definitely go for trees.
Thank you. How do you feel our community development department could better help new businesses as they come along?
Okay, I kind of already answered that. But definitely, you know, a business, I think as a business owner, you should come into the development office, find out what the rules are, and not assume that they're similar from where you ever had a business before, or if you've never had a business, because it could be quite different. Because I know there are really permits for things here that I never even imagined. But if you can go in, find out right away what you need, what the process is, how long it should take, and make sure that you and your contractor are on the same page about all that. It should be fairly quick. And to answer Tom's, the software is supposed to be in place on May 6. It could take a little bit, a week or so, to train the staff, but they should be able to have that up. And I also put $30,000 in the budget to update the website. Not the structure of the website, but to get more information on it. Because when we had to become more ADA compliant, a lot of the information we had on the website had to be taken down, and it's been a slow process to get it up. And some of the departments, like the planning and zoning department, have been reluctant to put things up. So we really need to encourage them, so that people can go online, whether it's a business or resident. I'm getting a water heater. Do I need a permit? What about a fence? What about a shed? And it should be all right there, so you can see exactly what you need to do. Fill out the form online, click a button, and off it goes.
Thank you.
Community development help. I think if we had a community development department, that might help. We're about helping businesses. If some of the people get in contact with the GMC, I think they're all about helping new businesses. Some of the, well, like I said, we both talked about the permit process. That doesn't help the development. Actually, I think Empanada was almost to the point where him starving his family, all the things he was doing, was trying to open up down there. And I wish him the best of success down there, but I think Gulfport as a whole supports local development and local businesses. I'd like to see some new things coming in, and I'd like to see possibly the GMC promoting some new businesses and getting them into the community. Justin Shea is kind of like one of the people that helps coordinate some of the things as far as casino and that. If anybody would be one of the candidates to help and head up a community development department, he would be the man to do it, and it would probably be an excellent community development department within the city. Thank you.
Okay, the next question is, since the city of Gulfport does not have an economic development department, what is one action the city can take to support businesses?
Tom, that's gonna be my turn. Well, I think I just said that. You know, creating a community development department would be a step in the right direction, and key to that is the right person in that spot. You know, you might not want to take Justin Shea out of the department. He's in... You know, you might not want to take Justin Shea out of the department he's in now, but I'm sure there's somebody out there that could step into that position and lead him in the right direction. The 49th Street Corridor project is based on safety. But I think there's more to that project than just safety. They're talking about maybe putting caution lights across the street, reducing speed, maybe doing some trees and that and islands that slow traffic down. But I think what needs to happen there, that project needs somebody to be coordinating the development of businesses along there. Not only businesses, but beautifying the businesses. That it's friendlier to go into them, that people feel comfortable up in that area to go to their businesses. There's some great seafood places, wholesale and that, that you can go up there and get that. But I think that might be a step in the right direction on that committee to get that person on board and start helping with it. Thank you. So.
Actually, we do have a community development department. That's where permitting is. Anyway. We do need to, we do need to make Gulfport physically more welcoming. And the 49th Street project is part of that. I'm working with the county on Gulfport Boulevard to beautify along there and make the street, especially those streets, feel as walkable as Beach Boulevard is. And that way we can get a lot more businesses up there. And probably, once you make the street more attractive, people are more likely to make their own buildings more attractive. And then the whole thing spirals into a much nicer shopping experience. And the same thing on 49th, a lot of those businesses would benefit from walkability. But a lot of them are like body shops and stuff, and that's a whole different kind of business. But you also need that kind of business, and that provides jobs. The thing that the city could do is, I think, make it easier to come here and to also maybe do an inventory of the kind of businesses we have and see what we're missing. And maybe even go out and try to recruit people to come in. And the GMC could help with that, but the city can do it. I know St. Peter's done that very successfully. And so, especially along 22nd Avenue. So those could be things that could help.
Thank you. Sorry to jump in earlier, I was just so excited that we're about to move into the two community questions that we received previous to tonight. So the first question from the community is, "The past several years have raised many questions about what decisions should be made at the state level and what decisions should be made at the local level. What is your stance on the importance of local governments being able to make their own decisions about local measures that affect their community?"
Home rule is a big deal. And I'd never even heard of home rule before I moved here. But, nor sunshine laws, those are all new things. But right now, I mean, Florida had traditionally been a place where home rule was really important. And individual communities developed unique personalities because they could make their own decisions. And now the legislature is taking over more and more decisions. So that, you know, it has to be the same for the whole state. And for some things, that's appropriate, like building codes. You don't want to have, you know, shoddy work one place and good work another place. That makes sense. You know, some road, you know, regulations, you know, speed limits, that kind of stuff. Those kind of things can make a big difference being on the state level. But when they start talking about how you deal with your trees or your design of your buildings or whether you have short-term rentals or not, or whether you can have plastic straws, that's going way too far, and they're doing a lot of that. And it seems like every year, it's more and more stuff. And they also often make you, as a city, pay for things that you didn't even make a decision to do and not give you any money to do it. So those are unfunded mandates. But all communities have different priorities, different needs, and we need to decide differently and be able to do that ourselves. And you should lobby about that, too. Thank you.
I, too, didn't know about the home rule. The home rule kind of protects us with some of our ordinance and regulations are in place now. The state doesn't have the ability to come in and just change them. I think it's terrible that they try to run some of the stuff down our throats that we don't necessarily want. We live in a very diverse community, and recently there was discussion about what flag we can fly at our library. Well, I think we, as a community, can decide what flag we want to fly at our library. I'm okay with the flags that are flown at the library. I'd like to see different organizations flying different flags at the library. During Veterans Week, we should fly to different services. Seabees is part of the Navy, but they could run a Seabee flag up there also. I think, you know, they're not giving us piles of money to control us. You know, a lot of our money is coming from our own local taxes on your houses. And I think with that, you should have to say so in what's going on in your city and not the state or the federal level. So I'm all about keeping it here, and as long as it's not something that's derogatory or that to other people or harming other people and that, I think we should be able to do things the way we've been doing. Keep Gulfport the charming town and city that it is. Thank you.
Okay, the next question is, based on the feedback you gathered as you campaigned, what are the top two issues you would take to city council, should you be elected?
One major one would be getting the building department in order. As far as timeliness, efficiency of the way it's ran. And I sure as heck didn't know that that was an economic development department. I think we're missing one of the figureheads, and they're the director of it evidently. One of the issues I've talked to people about is sidewalks. And through some research, now, I remember a presentation where they were doing research on the sidewalks and did some video on the sidewalks, but they haven't done anything about it yet. I think that's going to be coming in the future. I had a gentleman almost fall flat on his face in front of me, walking down the street from a little curb like that. We have a lot of elderly people in our community, there are mobility carts, there are walkers, there are canes. We need to look out for them. You know, we've got a senior center that they need to get over there, too, to get maybe a meal, the best meal they're going to have that day. And we sure don't want them falling and having a terrible accident on the way there. So that's a couple of issues I see that need addressed in the city. Thank you.
So the permitting process comes up all the time. That's definitely something we need to deal with. But also code enforcement. And very often code enforcement can be telling one person they need to cut the law, and another person they don't. They ignore somebody who's got an RV parked in a way that it's not supposed to be, or there are cars in the yard, cars that are supposed to be licensed and up to date on their tags and running. And there's a lot of things that they don't ignore. And I know it's made it harder because when you report to code enforcement, if you want to report somebody, you have to give your name. And so that puts a lot of people off because they don't want their neighbors mad at them. But there's a solution. Get a friend of yours who lives across town to report it, and then they won't know who did it. And you'll still get your results. And we do have two code enforcement people now. One's retiring soon, so we'll be hiring another one. So hopefully we can get that going better. And again, the software for permitting is coming, and hopefully that'll get better. Just so you know, if you do see sidewalks and stuff that are uneven, the Public Works has a thing that'll shave off the corners of any sidewalks so that there aren't abrupt changes. So you can always get that now. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're going to move into some of the cards that we received. Just to be clear, the cards all follow the same rules and the questions we wrote. They're given to both candidates, they both have a chance to respond. And a representative from the GMC went through and sorted them out to make sure that they follow those rules. So the first question is, Gulfport is known for its embrace of diversity. What is your past record in relation to the LGBTQ community? And how do you plan to support it if you are elected to the city council?
So being LGBT is just one way of being diverse here, and we certainly do have a good population of that. It would be nice if we even got more kinds of diversity, but still. I just got the endorsement from the Stonewall Democrats, which is an LGBTQ organization. And I've worked in San Diego for an LGBTQ plus Chamber of Commerce for several years and ran their scholarship department and did events for them. So I've been very involved with the community and always go to Pride. I've been going to Pride since I lived in San Francisco, you know, before the '70s. So, you know, it's just been always who my friends are and who I've been socializing with. So I'm very involved with that, and I support that, and I hope that they don't do the flag thing. But if they do, I would encourage everybody during Pride Month to have a Pride flag. And even if they take them off the city buildings, we'll have plenty of them around.
Tommy, are you ready?
Yes. Like April said, diversity isn't just in whether LGBT or that. There's different kinds of diversities. And some of my conversations with people around Gulfport, I got this, well, we don't have, we've got a racial discrimination problem, and I'm thinking, where is that? They didn't give me an example of it. Well, we don't have very many businesses that are minority-owned. I go, well, I know several minorities right off the top of my head. The new Epona's down there, he's a minority. The lady that runs the series, she's obviously a minority. There's different types of minorities. As far as talking about gay and lesbian and that, it's like, I've got a lot of friends that are both. I don't single them out or look at them any different. They're just people, you know, they're friends, they're associates, you know? They just want to live their life in peace and harmony, and that's the way it should be here in Gulfport. And I think for the most part, that is the way it is here in Gulfport. And that's what gives me pride to live here, that you just live your life and nobody singles you out. And it's a great community to live in where that is happening. And if we get more minorities in and minority-owned businesses, that's great. I think there's plenty of opportunities, plenty of spaces for it, not only down in the center of town, but also up on 22nd Avenue. Thank you.
Okay, the next question is, what are your plans to address the increasing homeless situation?
I get that question first. Oh, and I did prepare for it, I just needed to find it. Well, I'm just going to wing it because I can't find the head note on it. Oh, actually, I was at a council meeting where a social worker was introduced, and he's hired from the city of Gulfport and Treasure Island. And what I found very interesting was, he says, you know, I've been doing this for a long time. He says, "It may take me 50 visits with that person to just establish a relationship that we're actually talking, that he's opening up to me, or she's opening up to me." And with that relationship, sometimes things can be done to help them move in a different direction. Matter of fact, I also heard a story, I'm not sure if it's true, but there's a guy that's down there close to Boca Seaga High School, the place is a mess. He's a veteran, he's got PTSD. So he kind of walks softly along those lines with a person like that. And I heard that they were able to communicate with him, and they're moving him to a place, a center, that deals with PTSD, and he's put his house on the market now, so hopefully will continue to have those successes.
So quite correct, we do have a social worker who just started fairly recently and we're sharing with Treasure Island. And clearly, this isn't just a Gulfport problem. In fact, we're probably better off than a lot of different communities. And some of the people that hang out at the beach aren't actually homeless. They do have places that they can go. And all of our staff that are interacting at all with these people, the senior center, the fire department, the police department, the casino, they all have information that they give these people. And maybe even offer to drive them to shelters and that kind of thing. For the most part, the people that we see regularly don't want those services or don't trust those services yet. And we can just keep trying to work with them. The county is doing something about building some housing because we, as a city, don't have the resources to build a homeless shelter and staff it and run it. But the county does, and the state does. And hopefully they'll be getting some of those that are more close to here so that people might be more willing to go there, that they can still come to Gulfport part of the time and then go back and get the services that they need so that they can live a good life. But it's a big problem. You know, it's been, since they closed, you know, some of the mental health facilities, that people have been kind of just left on their own. And, you know, I at least always feel grateful that it's not me and want to help as much as I can in any way. And we're always open to ideas that people might have. And, yeah, working with the state and the county is what we want to do.
Thank you. Our next question from the audience. Will you promote keeping Gulfport Green and Maintain Clam Bayou Nature Park as a location safe and friendly for wild birds?
As much as I love trees, I love birds. So, like, you know, I walk around Wood Ibis every day, almost. And, you know, once it gets to be spring, you can even see the mormon babies, and you watch them have seven babies. Then sometimes it's five babies, and then it's four babies. But still, you know, you feel like it's a real part of your life. And they don't usually, I mean, the mormons nest there, but the other birds don't. And they nest more over by Clam Bayou. And so I think it's essential to keep Clam Bayou as it is, to not disturb the nesting birds. And if we need to plant more trees for them, yes, go ahead, and whatever kind they prefer. And I know even doing something to promote the osprey, to have platforms for the osprey so that they'll stay there. Because if you go further into Clam Bayou on your bike or whatever, you know, you can see some of those osprey nests. And then, and I see these little faces peeking out.
I love birds, too, but I think she loves them a lot more than me. I echo the same thing that April says there. As I, as I said in the beginning, I was an Eagle Scout. If anybody knows anything about scouting, we're all about ecology. And when it come to trees, I was right on board with her, the mayor, Ian O'Hara. You know, I think they supported that initiative of buying trees and putting more green out there, more shade in that in the city. As far as Clam Bayou, I don't know if there's any plans to do anything over there. I certainly like the area for the nesting and that for the birds. You also have the, I'm not sure what it's called, that run along the edge that they can't disturb. Forget the name of the plant, the tree that you can't disturb.
Mangroves.
Mangroves, you can't disturb. So that's another area where they don't get disturbed in that. Also, in town shores, they put these shell-like things in the water that help with the water quality. And I think there's more that we could do in our shoreline and that to help the water quality, which also help the wildlife in the area. So I guess that pretty much covers it. Thank you.
Well, staying sort of by Clam Bayou, what is your stance on developing the marina?
My stance on developing the marina? I heard that that was a discussion at one other time, and it wasn't a very popular discussion. I wasn't privy to it, wasn't here at the time when that was going on. I think there's obvious room for development down there. I think there's a lot of things that might benefit everybody that lives in the city. Some of the opposition, I think, was more from the people who are in the Marina district. But I'll give you for instance, because the gentleman said he had an elderly mom when he was down there in one area, getting on a boat and that. There's no restroom facilities on the farther end of the marina. Well, that's obviously one of the things that he will want to put in the plan. Put some better bathroom facilities that are more accessible. There's one up there by the boat dock where you put your boats in, but it's not way out there where you might be on one of the docks or that. So I think there's some things that could be done. But I think the plan is to have a group meeting in the casino, because I'm sure it's going to be a very large turnout, and get what the citizens' view is and what do they want to say. and get what the citizens' view is and what do they want to see. So I'm all about listening to the people and doing what the people of Gulfport want, not what Tom wants, it's what you want. Thank you.
Yeah, there was a fairly unpopular plan that they came up with a few years ago. And when they decided to put in the budget to plan for this one, and I'm all for planning, because I think that's how you don't end up somewhere you don't want to be. And luckily, they're not going to use the pre, they started off thinking they were going to use the previous plan as a starting place. They're apparently not doing that anymore. They're going to start fresh so that there'll be charrettes where people can come and give all the ideas that they have. And then they'll go back, make up some kind of plan from that information and then bring it back for more charrettes and get comments on it. Personally, I feel like we should plan, we should know what we're going to do for that. And there may be some things, like they just improved the dry storage area and some fencing and things like that. We have talked a lot about putting another bathroom in, but they wanted to see what the whole plan was going to be before they did that. And I think it could be implemented in stages. You know, there could be things like putting in a bathroom you do now, but then you wait until maybe there's a hurricane and then the building slows down. Then you need to put in whatever's going to happen. But, you know, sure then, you know, the people that are in there, the Lions Club, the BRCU C and the other Gulfport Boat Club, they're happy where they are. And we're getting income from that and they're taking care of the buildings and they provide the service to the city and to the residents. And I think we need the plan, but I don't think we need to implement the plan till we really need to or there's some more pressing reason to do that. Thank you.
So our next question is, what current zoning initiatives or ordinances do you feel are most in need of change?
I think we haven't reviewed our ordinances, especially around zoning and that kind of stuff, in a long time. And I don't think we need major overhauls. It would mainly, there could be some small things that I don't even know to look at it. But where the biggest changes would be, I would think, would be for more affordable housing. So now you can build like a mother lard or an accessory dwelling, you'd have ADU because that's your current logo for that. You can build that if you have a fairly big lot. I'd like to see it so that anybody could build one. So as long as you met the current stand, setbacks and everything for a normal house on your lot, that you could make a garage apartment or add a little tiny house if you wanted, as long as, again, you were following all the rules that somebody building a new house on that lot would be followed. And the same thing, we might want to look at having duplexes or triplexes where there's single family homes now. We don't have very many empty lots in the city and so it wouldn't be a major change. But the most popular part of our city is often the arts district where there's lots of duplexes and triplexes and small apartment buildings. And you could get that same kind of character in the rest of the city and bring a little more housing and because they're smaller, they're going to be more affordable. But we really need to have workshops and have a lot of community input so everybody's on the same page.
I don't feel that our zoning ordinance has been looked at for years. I was on the zoning board for eight years in Ohio. We would take almost a whole year to go through a zoning plan from front to back. If you don't keep on top of it, just wording can put you in a bad way as far as things that you think you took care of as far as zoning. Next thing you know, somebody's coming in, well, that's not the way I read it. So right now, there is not what I would call a zoning director that's giving the zoning and planning department any type of guidance to change anything in the ordinance. There's parking issues. There's people, they have absolutely no parking. There should be things put in there to accommodate that so we can correct that. It might not conform to the current zoning ordinance, but we certainly could make the changes to help that out. There's also sidewalk issues that I talked about earlier. When we got development coming in, we should make them put sidewalk in front of the house. So some of those streets that don't have sidewalks, that people with mobility scooters have to go out on the street and get around, we start to get sidewalks built at the contractor's cost, not the city's. That pretty much covers what I had.
What is your vision for Gulfport five years from now?
Is it my turn?
Yes.
Well, I hope I'm still here, let's put it that way. Every day is a blessing. You know, I hope we're moving in the right direction with some of the things we're talking about today. I think we can do a major change as far as water quality. The tree initiative, I think, is moving in the right direction. I think we're going to see more shade. I think we're going to see better water quality. I think if I get on the board, I'd also like to advocate Tallahassee for funding for some of the projects that's costing us out of our city budget and we can put it to better use in other places, such as sewer, stormwater runoff. One of the things I'd like to address, and I've had this conversation with a lot of people, the storm water. We have about five different water retention ponds and they're at the height of the land around there. Why is that? When we get a big storm, they start to fill up. If you recall in New Orleans, they had that problem. The sea was higher than the land. They put in huge pumps that would move a volume of water in a short period of time. If we lower the height of them, so when it is storming, it's got a place for the water to go and then as the water is coming in, have the pumps come on automatically also so it's pumping out. It's not going to solve it right down by the ocean, let's put it that way. I'm not an engineer, but I think it's certainly something we need to look into. Thank you.
Well, I got them, we're doing a stormwater study and I got them to get a grant for doing a vulnerability study. And those are due at the end of twenty-four. And so in five years, I would like to see us implementing some of the solutions to that. And a little bit contrary, we did just dredge out Collins and Pond and they decided that Wood Ibis Pond, which is the only one that's actually got a lot of water in it, that it didn't need it, although it does flood our way and we need to address that. But I think there'll be a lot of things that come out of these studies that would give us places to put money. And there's a lot of money in the federal government as well as the state to get grants for these things. And once we have these studies, then we'll be eligible for some of those grants. I want to see the trees that we're planting today grow and we'll have more trees. And hopefully, we'll have more businesses and we'll have more young people coming into town. I had Gulfport on the Edge, the series of three town halls. So we did a look at what was good now, what were threats and opportunities and what we saw in the future. And pretty much, we saw the future being kind of like it is now, only with more people, you know, working with each other, young people working with old people. And, you know, a lot more education about the natural environment and affordable housing and trees and music and art.
All right, our next question is kind of a two-part. How would you evaluate the success of fundraising for the senior center? And how would we hold the paid accounting firm or the paid fundraising firm accountable for the success of the fundraising for the new senior center?
So I'm all in favor of a new senior center. The one we have gets good use and people love it. And, you know, it is aging out, it's small. I think we can maintain it as well as maybe we shouldn't over the years, but that's past history. I think that we, the people that we chose were out of state and I don't know quite why that decision was made, but we need to really hold them to the fire and make sure that they're meeting their goals and also applying for grants wherever they possibly can. I know that we're applying to the state this time for about a million and a half, but we are going to need at least fifteen million. And, you know, I brought this up when they came last year, you know, at the end of the year for their renewal, that they haven't been meeting some of their goals and that's concerning. And I think maybe we need to start looking at alternatives or additional places that we could start raising money and see where we could go with that. Because I think people will be really disappointed if it doesn't happen. And then if we have to start all over with doing some other kind of plan, it just sends back the whole thing. So hopefully, we can make this happen and get the money that we need. And if, you know, we build it, maybe they'll have to be smaller or something or a little different. But hopefully, we can do something that everybody's going to be happy with and it'll take care of our senior population and I'll get to go to exercise classes all the time.
I think the company that was hired to raise the funds, I was at that meeting where you voted against keeping them on board, but in listening to, going back to the video that was at meeting, I think they had said they have a lot of people that are committed. They haven't actually handed over the money yet. But I think that's an effort that they're continuing to do. Hopefully, they did get their contact, contract extended. Hopefully, with their contacts and that and the people that have made these commitments are going to come through with them and they'll continue that effort. I don't think we're on an exact deadline that we got to meet that. But also, having been in the building industry and that all my life, you know, it's a possibility we may have to just step back a little bit and do more of a smaller type renovation, some remodeling within it. And, you know, if the funds aren't raised, you can't get a contractor to build something as grandiose as the plan is for less than that fifteen million. So, but I think their efforts are genuine. I think the people are going to step up and start contributing to it. So that's it.
What would you do to reduce any waste of pets?
Thank you. Oh. I'm very frugal, let's put it that way. When it comes to the budget, there's going to be a budget presented that I'm going to look over and I'm going to be about saving money, always been that way. And that'll never change. Am I going to sit here tonight and tell the people here in the audience, I'm going to cut this part of this budget and I'm going to cut that part of that budget? No. I think the people of Gulfport like all the services that they're getting. We have a safe town. That's one of my highlights of this town was it's very safe. You can walk from Town Shores to Gulfport, drink a couple of drinks, head back. If my wife does that, she's by herself, I feel very assured that she's going to be safe. So we have a very good police department. We have a great fire department. And everybody here, when it comes to emergency, your loved ones laying on the ground, they're there to help. We're not going to cut in that department. Matter of fact, we're going to make sure we get the best personnel that the wages can hire so you get those services in Gulfport. And some of the other amenities that we have. So I'm not sure that we're going to cut it, but I don't look to ever raise your military.
So I'll do sort of what I do now. And that's go through the budget line by line. We're full service, nobody wants to cut that. That's been popular forever. Anytime anybody mentions it, yeah, that's a bad issue. So we definitely want to keep the fire, the police, the full service sanitation and all of that. And we do have good departments. But what we need to do is make sure that when we're contracting for things, that we're getting the bids that we ought to get. Very often, we, you know, when I ask, and I ask a lot of questions, when I ask about this, they'll say, well, we're just piggybacking onto this. Well, there's multiple state or federal contracts or even county contracts that we can piggyback onto. So we should be getting quotes from several people, from various contracts to see what's the best price for whatever it is we're doing, whether it's streets or doing the tennis courts or whatever it is. So we still want to do those things, but there could be ways that we could do them better and cheaper. And we could get grants for a lot of things. I think one of the best things we could spend money on is a grant rider because there's money out there for lots of different things. And we could be getting more done either by matching funds or using grants to do them. And sometimes the staff just don't have the time to go find the grants that we need. So we need to be looking at everything that we're doing and making sure that we're doing it the most efficient, practical, economical way.
So I don't mean to encourage the daggers getting pulled out, but what do you think the most significant policy difference would be between you and your opponent?
Well, I don't really know what his policies would be, really. So it's a little bit hard to tell. But the things that are most important to me are environmental issues, anything that's going to do with climate change, more flooding, infrastructure, safety. I want people to feel secure where they are and I want us to be a prosperous community. So I want to take care and make sure that we're not getting flooded out and spending money repeatedly cleaning up from floods. And also affordability, to make sure that we do everything we can to add affordable housing and try and keep the things, the people who are living here now here so that they can afford to be here. So whether that's insurance, home insurance, car insurance, flood insurance, that we're really trying to be on top of that and keeping it within the balance of what we're having for our normal cost of living situation. So those are the things that I find most important. There's a lot of other issues. And I found that being on council, I've had to learn about so many things. It's like going to college again. You know, I didn't know much about sewer systems. I didn't know about a lot of things. But I've learned a lot because I've gone to a lot of different meetings in state and local, you know, some of these cities, Florida and the cities. And I've learned a lot. And so there's a lot of different issues. So every time I turn around, there's something, somebody's asking me about something new. So, you know, but those are the two that I feel are most important.
I've seen some things that my opponent thinks were saying on policies that you've discussed outsourcing the garbage department several times. I did a little investigating into that and the price for garbage service seems to be the same no matter where you call around various cities. I think that's a bad move. We've got about eighteen employees over there. I called the city manager and asked him how many were there. And not only do they pick up garbage and that, they do other things. They work for the city manager. So if we have a storm or a hurricane or that, they're going to be out there picking up limbs, sweeping the streets, doing everything they can do to get you moving in your vehicles down the roads, the businesses getting back in full operation where their vendors can get in and deliver food and that. So I think that would be a big mistake, outsourcing the garbage department. And I have a little bit of compassion to it. They all have families, they all rely on their retirement and their health benefits and that. And I can't see that happening just to outsource it. And we're, like I said, we're going to not have those people working. I think the city is being run well by the city manager who oversees various departments. And it seems like in most departments, he's got some great directors that are doing a very competent job and I'd like to see that continuing. Thank you.
This is Mark. Statement, I'll turn into your question. I want better RV parking in the statement. What would you do about it for questions? I want better RV parking. What would you do about it?
Well, that was actually an issue that came up recently and I was very interested in, but there's nothing that happened with the RV parking for Tom in Town Shores because it's against our ordinance over there. We can't have it. But I felt very compassionate to be involved in those discussions because I own an RV. If I owned a home, I wouldn't see any reason why I can't park my camper in my backyard. And the ordinance actually did get changed in various ways. I can't quote the exact ways, but you can park it in the front now as long as it's not blocking sidewalk. They've limited the side yard setbacks on it also. I don't even know if there is a distance. Enough that they can get a firefighter to get through to get to the back of your house. I know that was discussed. And then the back, there were some people that are just non-compliant. They could never get an RV in and have this side yard setback setback and this other side and the backyard. It's like, it'd be up against the house. So they did look at that and I think they did a great job of that. Oh, they didn't touch boats though, because this is efficient state. So they didn't touch boats. So that didn't change at all. You can park them anywhere you want. But I'm glad they did. I think it helped a lot of people. Some people weren't in favor of it. But you pay the taxes, you own the house, you should be able to do that. And not pay somebody down the street a store. own the house, you should be able to do that and not pay somebody down the street, a storage facility, $200 to $400 a month. Thank you.
Okay. First I want to clarify one thing. When I brought up the garbage, I'm always looking for ways we can save money. So, I looked at how, how we might be able to do that with our garbage service. No people would have lost their jobs. Whoever we brought in would have hired all of those people or they could have got hired in the parks department or whatever. Nobody would have lost their job, but it wasn't popular, so we moved on. The RVs, it, it's a tough situation. I think part of it would be being more clear on our website about what you, what the ordinances are for RVs because I know people have come here, seen RVs parked all over the place, thought they could just bring one here and park it wherever they wanted and then find out if their neighbor complains, they're in trouble because code enforcement isn't always equal in how they deal with these things. So, I think that the compromise we came to on the RVs was probably about as best it's going to be for the time being. We've also got a lot of people moving here that are, that are different than the people who've been here before and they don't necessarily want to see RVs parked in the front yard. But the other people who've lived here for years and they're used to having that. So, you have to balance the needs of everybody and we did have a lot of discussion and, you know, in time it'll come up again and things should come up again because again, population changes, people's needs change. So, every few years you'll end up discussing the same thing and that's a move.
Our next question is, what is your stance on expanding the Airbnb and short-term rental footprint in Gulfport?
So, there's a bill that's going to be coming up this time that, and it was maybe going to happen last time, but it didn't. Where you, like we have a grandfathered ordinance where you can have RV, I mean, short-term rentals on beach, shore and a little bit of 22nd. The rest of the city is supposed to be lovely rentals for the most part. If we change anything right now, then we go to a situation where we have no ordinance at all and you could have Airbnbs everywhere. And the council has not been in favor of that. This new law could allow us to expand the footprint. So, maybe it could be beach in a block over or shore in a block up or whatever. I think that's something that needs a lot of discussion because even doing the whole thing about getting software to monitor the short-term rentals, there was a lot of controversy. People, people love them because they make a lot of money on them. Other people hate having like a motel next door. And again, it calls for a lot of discussion because no matter where we would increase the footprint, it could disadvantage some people and advantage other people. And, and if, if we made it, say, a block wider than it is now, somebody that's two blocks wider might be angry because they didn't get in on it. So, it needs a lot of discussion and thoughtfulness on it to see what's going to be the best outcome so that we do have some places where visitors to stay, but we're not living among a whole bunch of motels.
I think now the, the area that's, that's got the Airbnbs is closer to our downtown area, which April said was shore and beach. And, and I think that could be expanded, but then again, through my travels, you hear a, a lot of people that are, that are against it. And then, and I always revert back to my, "You pay the taxes on that property and it's yours to do what you want to do with it." I, I think even through the discussion, you know, you're never going to get everybody on board with the same idea of what should happen. But I know people that's got Airbnbs that do a wonderful job maintaining them. They've got rules in place and typically you don't even know they're there. I, I was in a neighborhood where a lady pointed out something wrong. I said, "How do you feel about it?" She said, "They don't bother me." She said, "There's never any problem." I go, "Not even loud music in there?" "No, you wouldn't even know it's an Airbnb." I go, "I know it is because the guy told me." So, she didn't have a problem with it. Maybe that's one of the things that, you know, down the road, you know, develop a, a plan for that and maybe put up for a random vote. What's the whole city as a whole feel it should be? Allow more of them or not allow more of them? Thank you.
What would you do if the mayor or another city council person held a different opinion, an opinion you disagree with on that's real?
Well, that's going to happen. That's why it's a five-person board. I would only hope that we would have differences of opinion. I think, I think you need to have those conversations and it needs to be brought out in public, what the conversations are about that disagreement and, and the common sense or, or that comes out and you ask, you ask the public also for some of their opinions during those council meetings and hopefully at the end of the meeting, you, you've come to some sort of agreement on it. Or if it's something that the council can, and I've seen this happen even with April on the board, you know, they table it. They don't think it's something that we can work out tonight. It's, it's a difference that, that's something they can't come to a common ground on. So, that needs to be tabled. There needs to be more discussion. They need to get out and about and ask people their opinions on that because we're not out there just to be what our opinion is and what we think should be going on. I better represent you and you and you. I want to know what you want. So, it, it's about what the people of Gulfport want. I'm your voice. So, you need to come to your council people and express your opinions. And when that happens in a meeting, there's differences, oh boy, I'm sure they get the emails and, and the phone calls.
I wish there was more disagreement on city council. I'm tired of being the only one, but I think, I think an effective council would have more diversity than we have now of opinions. Because the more different opinions you have on anything, say, say about the RV thing, the more opinions you have and the more you can talk about it and take the time to have discussions. Often we don't take enough time to either have long discussion items on the agenda or make workshops on it. And I'm, I would be happy to have as many workshops as we ever needed because that's the only time with sunshine laws we can really discuss stuff. And so, if we have disagreements, you know, he might want A, I might want B, and if we talk about it long enough, maybe we'll come out to C and that's the best decision for everybody. But if nobody discusses it and nobody brings up good arguments for one way or another, not, not just I don't like it, but have some real information and, and do some research, then we can come up with something that, that works and it might be a better situation. So, I, I think disagreements and differences of opinion are the thing.
Thank you. Our next question and second to last is, what is your biggest wish for Gulfport?
Peace and prosperity. I, you know, I, I wish that we never have a direct hit hurricane. That would be a big one. I wish all of our pets could live twice as long as they do now. I, I just hope that we keep having the good fortune of being where we are and being able to live the way we do and that it doesn't get too hot for us to be here and that we can all just liberalize in a peaceful and happy way.
Peace and prosperity. I like that. Everybody wants that. And I, I can only agree with our pets. We love our pets. Boy, is this a pet-friendly town. I've knocked on a few doors and I think there's maybe one or two that didn't have a dog barking. I, I call that the, the dog doorbell, but, but continue to, to live together in harmony. I don't see a lot of disputes amongst people. Of course, I live in Town Shores. Most of the people are asleep by eight, nine o'clock, but I, I really don't see a lot of controversy amongst people. The diversity is great and, and the, the direction that we're, we're heading, I think we've got some great leadership and I'd like to see Tom Bixler on the council. I, I have to say that. I would continue the, the great legacy of, of Gulfport with, you know, some of the things we've always done, some of the events that we've always put on. I don't even think you could squeeze many more events in. I said that earlier and, and it's just a great thing because there's always something to do. You don't have to leave town. And I think the GMC did a great thing when they started putting their little signs out. Buy local. Think about it. We don't have to go down there. We got it right here in town. Let's buy local. Thank you.
Last question. What is the one issue you believe is most important?
Well, I have to admit, the building department affects everyone. I don't care if you put the fence up. I talked to a gentleman from Maryland on Shore Boulevard. The guy's an engineer. He does big decks. He does shorelines, you know, restoration. He's, he's used to permitting. He said to me, "How in the world do you get anything done here? It's taken me about three weeks to get a permit. Just change a fence and it's already in place. I'm going to put in a new fence and make it look better. I can't get my permit. I want to take all railings down." I think that definitely needs attention. I don't know what it's going to take, you know? A computer system or a software was purchased. I don't think it was ever put into play. You, you should be able to go in there or actually you should be able to do it from convenience of your home, fill out the application for the permit, go in there, they already know who you are, bring you up on a computer and start working on getting your permit needs taken care of. And the zoning department seems to be in that same area and that, that could stand a little bit of help too. We, we lost one person. He's already retired by the way, and we have one person. I think two of them joined in forces, kind of helped them. So, that's it.
So, I agree about the permitting and the, and the community development office. Definitely needs to work, but the software has been bought, is being implemented. I was hoping Tom, hoping March 6th, so we'll see. But I think the, the biggest challenge is, is making sure that people really have a voice in what's going on. I think too many things happen and kind of be a little bit behind closed doors and don't get a full discussion. They don't end up on the agenda and, and I think, I, I want things to be more transparent and that, that hopefully people become even more involved. And maybe they would if we made our agendas more user-friendly so that it was a little clearer what was actually going to be talked about so that more people would come to council meetings and not be bored. You know, and so the, the planning department, those are, those are good changes that we could make that would help people become more involved and be more interested. But I think the real biggest problem that we have or issue that we have is really climate change. And it doesn't affect people so much every day. Luckily, it doesn't flood every day, but it's more and more often. And it's the kind of thing that if you don't really start thinking and planning about now, it'll be too late by the time you start. So, that's the thing I think that we really need to work on. All these other things that need to take place too and luckily we can multi-catch. We don't have to do just one. You can do more than one at a time.
Thank you very much. And before we move into the closing statements, on behalf of John and I, I want to thank the audience for bringing us some great questions. I think we had a great discussion and thank you to the candidates for reviewing those questions and keeping going with the discuss, sticking to the time limit. So, as Tom, as you opened, you also now have your two minutes closed.
Thanks again, everybody. I want to thank the GABR and the Merseyside Chamber again for hosting the event and all of you for the watching at home, hopefully through that camera. Years ago, as an Eagle Scout, I built my skills, integrity, honesty, leadership and the desire to serve and give back to the community. I served our country with the Navy Seavies and continued to build my skills and my leadership skills and teamwork and in the building trades. In Goshen, Ohio, where I live, the community I served, I was a member of the, of school board, the zoning board, the board of appeals and the Lions Club. I also served our students as an instructor for 18 years at Gray Oaks Career Vocational School. In my Gulfport community, I'm currently serving on the zoning board, the surf team and the Lions Club. On March 19th, I'll be seeking to serve Gulfport as your next city council member. I have to support the mayor and two of the other members of city council. I've been endorsed by the Suncoast Police Benevolent Association and the Pinellas Paternal Order of Police, but the real support I need is going to come from you, you right here. I hope I've earned your support, that you'll vote for me. My cards are in the back, my contact information's on it. I want to learn more about your concerns and about your visions for Gulfport and the future. Please contact me at any time. I don't care about your political affiliation and, and what that might be. This is a nonpartisan position. I care about Gulfport. I care about the inclusion. I care about the services that my community, community provides to you. This is a unique city that I love and I want to be a part of the planning for the future. Again, I'm Tom Bixler. I'm asking for your vote in person or by mail. I truly hope you'll reach out to me so that even as a candidate, I can begin to represent you and find out what your needs are. Thanks again. Go Team Gulfport, can do.
Thank you, Tom. April, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, I want to thank the GMC and the GABR for having us and for the questions that people brought and to have such a nice crowd. This is great. So, I've done a lot of things in my life. My main career was in container shipping and I've lived in lots of different countries and cities. And what I bring is the knowledge of what people have done in different places and how, how they make it work somewhere else. Like a lot of you coming from different places, you know, you bring experience of, of what they did in whatever town or city you did, you lived in and, and with your careers, again, you know, the experience you have. And so, together we've been able to do some things and some of the things I've already accomplished was having these town halls. The three Gulfport on the, Gulfport on the Edge Town Hall. I had a Parkin Town Hall, a Tree Town Hall. I wanted to have another Tree Town Hall, but they wouldn't let me, but we'll work on that. I hope we've got 30,000 on the budget to improve the website. We've got 30,000 for trees. I've been working on getting speakers to come and talk to the council so that the council learns, but also all of you learn. So, I've had presentations on climate change, workforce housing, 3D transportation, electric vehicles, Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. I had a resiliency plan they presented, a tree canopy presentation, hurricane Ian effects. And those have just been the last couple of years. I've tried working on overdue bills and trying to encourage the city to collect more money on our marina and utility bills that are overdue and that hasn't gone anywhere. I've also urged the city to, to apply for more grants because I think there's a lot we could do without our own taxpayer money, which would be very helpful. And I really want to see us work on environmental stuff. I want to work together with people. I like to have a lot of input and I want to have more people come to council and I want you, of course, to vote for me. And I do have a lot of endorsements. If you go to my website, you'll see Jennifer Webb, Renee Flowers, Eric Lynn, Lindsay Cross, Daryl Rousson, our senator, or was our senator, Kathleen Beckman, Teresa Edmonds, our school board person, Yolanda Roman, who was a past councilperson, Charlie Justice, Deborah Fink Saunders, who's in St. Pete, the Pinellas County Democratic Veterans Caucus.
Get behind everybody.
Okay. Please vote for me.
So, I've been in Gulfport more than 20 years and it's nice to see that no matter how we fall down politically, we can all bond over how much we love dogs and how much we don't love the building department. Whoever wins this race, it is a thankless job. It is by and large not a very well-paid job. Few professions are as criticized. So, again, please join me in thanking them both for throwing the names in the hat. We'll see this in plenty of time. If you are doing mail-in voting or early voting, you've got information. The chamber has been fantastic. It was so nice to do that with you this year, do this with you. And the GABR, of course, will be asking more questions of the candidates, which I know they love, in the coming weeks. So, please stay. So please stay involved, and I was serious, I hope you all show up at city council next week. Have a great night. They're gonna be out in the lobby talking more, if you wanna meet them one-on-one. Thank you.